All right. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 11th, 2022 special meeting of the Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Richard Parker. I'm the chairman of P and Z. Due to the renovations at City Hall Chambers, this meeting will be held on the Zoom platform. And as you've just heard Conrad say, it is being recorded. If anyone has any technical difficulties, they can contact Conrad O'Meadow at 336-214-4515. Since we are on the Zoom platform, if you wish to speak to any matter that comes before the board, please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're on the phone. The host will recognize you and give you three minutes to state your your business. If you want to speak, you must give your name and address when you are recognized. The commission is appointed by elected officials and has five regular members, two extraterritorial members, and three alternates. Four members constitute a quorum. If five members are present, our alternate members are welcome to stay and listen. However, they are not required to stay. This is a public meeting, so if you would like to speak to any matter, we'll give you a chance. Now it's time for our roll call. I'm gonna call everybody's name. Please raise your hand. If present. John Black. Ron Kirk.
Here.
James Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Lee Ron.
There.
Joan Zek Nelson.
Present.
Amber Wright. Patricia Gamble.
Here.
Ethan Raynor.
Present.
Now, has Bill Appelenapp dropped off of this commission? Or is he still a member?
He's still a member technically until council appoints new members, but he's he's planning to step off, so.
Okay.
He's unexpected this evening.
All right, thank you. Staff President Conrad O'Meadow.
Present.
And Jamie Lawson.
Present, good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Philip Walker is here to present the local historic overlay design. Our mission tonight, item number two, is to have the historic overlay district design standards and process assessment document reviewed. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Mr. Philip Walker and Mr. Keith Covington are to present the local historic overlay LHO district design standards and Ms. Jamie Lawson, Planning Director, will present the process assessment recommendations. Now, before we start this discussion tonight, does anyone here on the commission have any conflicts with the items that we're on, we will discuss tonight? Anybody have a conflict? Okay. Philip, glad you're here. We're ready for your brief presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I want to mention Keith Covington.
You're breaking up, Philip.
Who's been my my sidekick on this message that said your connection is unstable or something. Can you hear me now? Okay?
A little better.
A little better. You may want to turn off your video to see if that helps you at all.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think that'll help. Okay. So what I was saying is that Keith Covington, who's been working with me on the project, isn't able to attend this. He has another previous commitment. But anyway, I guess the biggest question is to kind of start into this is to figure out how you want me to approach it, because if I recall correctly, last time, you know, when we had the previous meeting before we we extended into this one, I think I went through the the document, you know, fairly. I don't know comprehensively, maybe. The in sort of a concise way, do you want me to? Should we land on the table of contents and I can just kind of run through that? Does that help? Or how would you all like me to do it? I'm I'm happy to proceed however you all would like.
Well, actually, the the rub last time was the process assessment recommendations that Jamie wanted to add at the last minute. And there was some objection to that. So that was the that was the biggest rub. I think most of us have had sufficient time to go through the historic overlay design and and see, you know, read the the document, look at the pictures. I I kind of feel like you commissioners help me now. We feel pretty comfortable with the historic overlay design standards that we've been presented, this document of 150 some pages.
Chair, if you don't mind, let me just, let me just kind of set the stage for where we are and what transpired. So the the, I think there was just some clarification from the last meeting on a couple of items. And the process assessment recommendations, they were included in your packet from the last meeting and have been recommended throughout the process. The the issue was in our consistency statement, we did not include that text in the language of the consistency statement. So we have, we have added in, and I can go to the consistency statement and the ordinance if you want to just show you, but those those recommendations have not changed. They have been part of the process for the process assessment document. And essentially what that is, is staff went through, you know, how the HPC functions, how staff functions, the process itself, and made some suggestions to 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 streamline the process, to make it more user friendly, to make it more efficient and more modernized. So that's essentially the process side of things, which is one part of this project that staff did. And then the second thing that was asked upon us was to help clarify some recommendations that differed, that that staff had that differed from the HPC. So you'll see on this this page that's that's shown here and also included in your staff report. These these recommendations that are in red are recommendations that staff has provided that differ from the HPC. And we are recommending that the item move forward with these recommendations. But certainly, the Planning and Zoning Commission can 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 recommend, you know, the the document move forward as is, or if there's particular things, particular aspects of those recommendations, you can you can pick some of them or you can pick all of them. So that that kind of helps to clarify, I think, the two things that were confusing from the last meeting. And I'll be happy to answer questions and 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 help to clarify if that's needed at all.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Chairman Parker?
Go ahead.
The city staff has made recommendations that the Historical Association, I think that's what they're called, did not, did they just not get a chance to vote on those? Did they? Were these done after the fact? Why haven't, why didn't they approve these?
Okay, so let me, so they they have not been that done after the fact. Let me share my screen if I can. And these are, there are just some differences. And let me take a step back. So I'll go to screen two here. So if you recall, there's different types of work that the applicants can request, and there's three different categories of approvals or two different categories approval and one not. So when you cut, when you have a property in the Historic Preservation Commission, Local Historic District Overlay, the first, if something falls in this first category, it requires going to the Historic Preservation Commission for approval. That's a major COA. The minor COAs and the minor work category, which is the second category, that's where staff can approve something administratively. And then the third category, no COA, that's general maintenance items. So there's situations, and you'll see them on the following pages where the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, made a recommendation for an item to stay, let's say, under a minor work, administrative approval, and staff is recommending that the item gets switched from minor COA to a to no COA, general maintenance, to to help to facilitate projects where homeowners can can do improvements, you know, quicker without having to go through approval process. So this has all been vetted through the HPC. There are just about 10 different items where staff and the HPC agree that there needs to, that they need to be addressed in the standards. There's just a difference between the category of who would do the approval. So the H, so for example, under A4, staff is recommending that the chimney caps and installation of roof ventilators when they are visible from the street, that that would just be general maintenance. And the HPC is is suggesting that they become an administrative approval. Under the next page, and they're all highlighted under this SR category, where there's a where there's a caveat down at the bottom of the difference between these two. SR2, staff recommends replacement of windows and doors and removal of additions and replacement of garage doors, if not visible from the street, under a minor COA. And the HPC is recommending that that have to go to the HPC for a meeting for approval. Same thing with masonry foundations, replacement of architectural details, and all of these different items. And this section deals with landscaping. So where and some of these are just clarification and language. So B1, really, there's not too much difference between what the HPC was recommending and what staff was. We're we're caveating, adding some language regarding the recommended plant list, which is in the back of the report. Item number, this item here, B2, removal of dead or diseased trees. Staff is recommending that be general maintenance. Landscape change is not visible from the street, including demolition of any part of any landscape feature that would fall under a minor COA. That's very similar to what the HPC had. We just took out the word major because it was major is so subjective. Additional removal of individual plants visible from the street. Staff is recommending that be a minor COA. And then there's two more, removal of healthy trees. If they are replaced by another tree on the recommended plant list, staff is recommending that that be a minor work and the HPC is recommending that that be a major work. And then the last item was dealing with deteriorated accessory buildings that are not original to the site or otherwise historically significant, significant staff is recommending that there be no, that that's a general maintenance issue. And the HPC is recommending that that be a minor work. So there's, I'll go back to the other screen. Any any questions on that, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So staff.
I've got a question since we're on this section.
Sure.
Can you go back to the landscaping?
Yes.
Section. So like one of them, staff recommendation number eight looks at item B4, the additional removal of individual plants visible from the street. So am I interpreting this correctly? This staff recommends removing this line altogether?
No. No, we're not recommending.
What's what's the removal then? What what's the staff?
That recommends removal of B4 as recommended by the HPC. No, that one we were not, I don't, I don't believe that that one we were recommending removal of.
You know, hey, Jamie, this is Phil. I'm wondering if that was the intent because the issues addressed in other other, you know, lines here. I that that may have been intended to remove only because it's like maybe kind of redundant or there's maybe a couple of categories that kind of cover that overall issue. Does that make sense?
Oh, I'm, yes, I'm reading it incorrect. This was one that we we felt that there was that that was covered elsewhere, so we were recommending removal of that. That's correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. It is that somewhere else then? Because I'm sitting in on some of those meetings of the advisory committee. There, there's a lot of discussion about landscaping and the and the intention I got was every time somebody buys a plant and puts it in their front yard, they don't need to go to the city for that, do they? I mean, this, I know loads of people in Historic District that are at Lowe's every weekend. They're doing their seasonal flower beds.
Right, so.
That seems way.
Yeah, so the the landscape, like B1, landscape pruning alterations, including vegetables and flower garden shrubbery and installation of plants and the addition and removal of individual plants.
Okay.
As long as those are all captured under the recommended plant list, which includes trees and shrubs and, you know, we want to encourage homeowners to make improvements to their yard, but we don't want them to have. Our our suggestion is we don't want them to have to come to the HPC or to come to staff every time they want to do something like that. So that item be that that item, and some of these were carried over from the original standards, and the language was really vague, very vague. So we felt like with some of these modifications, we were able to really kind of capture what we were looking for and make it clearer.
Okay. And and one follow up question. Trying to interpret these, it seems like staff is pushing to make more of this at the discretion of the owner with less review and oversight. Seems like all of them staff recommendations are for going to a a less intensive process.
Well. Yes and no. Like I said, there's, there's a lot of additional line items where there was much more clarity in terms of what the actual action or type of work is going, that there's, that they're looking to do, a homeowner or developers looking to do. So with with adding in additional clarity and additional language, we were able to take something that, let's say, wasn't addressed or would have been part of a major COA and with more clarity and better guidelines, either have that under a minor work or in some cases, no COA. And so we did shift a number of things in the direction of more user friendly, but I think with better guidelines and better standards, we were able to do that.
Okay, final question. The the HPC, I'm intrigued by this disagreement on these matters. Do they have a statement of opinion on the staff recommendations? Or I think we have some representatives of the HPC here. I'm just curious if they're supportive of these recommendations or or perhaps, or maybe I'm more concerned if they have strong opposition to these recommendations.
Um, well, I see Brian Pennington, who's the vice chair on the call. If the chair would like to hear from from Brian, I'm sure that he could provide, you know, some some response. Before you get to that, though, I just wanted to also mention there were two other bullet points or three other bullet points that were included in the staff memo to also be clarification from your last from your last meeting. And those were captions on D12 and edits to page D71 and P and page D66. Chair, would you like to hear from Brian Pennington?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, Brian, I'm going to promote you to panelist, okay?
You see you, Brian. Unmute yourself and see if you can address some of these issues.
Uh, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
I'm Brian Pennington. I'm the vice chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I and I should say I'm only one member of the commission and I did not participate in the advisory committee meetings on this, but I would just like to voice my support for moving forward with these staff recommendations. It seems to me one thing the consultants and the commission and the advisory committee have done is to create a document and a process that is much more organic. It's much more of a living process. And, you know, when and if we encounter problems with any of these items, we have the ability to go back and revise these standards. I just think it's, I I would be in favor of moving forward with this. We've had a lot of input from residents of the districts and from residents of Burlington who just want to see a revised set of standards, a a better and more efficient process. So I would support moving forward with the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you for joining us, helping us out here. Now, Jamie, would we as P and Z vote to approve this and then it would go back to HPC for their final approval or no?
No, no. So this is, this is a legislative matter. These are standards that address the the two historic districts and your landmarks. So so these, this document would, you're in advisory capacity. You would be making a recommendation to city council. And this move, this would move forward to city council for their for their review and and final adoption. This has also been reviewed by the state throughout the process as well.
Let's, let's hear from some of the other commissioners, how you feel about this. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Well, the first thing that I think this is probably one of the great collaborations that I've seen. And I applaud the staff, Conrad, Jamie. I applaud the work that you've done here. I know Ryan's been involved and I would, I would love to hear from Ryan just one more time about it. This seems like it was, it was really well done.
I agree completely. Very well done. There were some loose ends that were caught at the last meeting with some of this process stuff. I feel it's much clearer with the new motion that we have in front of us. I had support from the HPC member from Brian Pennington there. Thanks, Brian, for for speaking up to that. And so I'm very much supportive of moving this forward. And I like the way Brian framed it, and I hope it stays that way, that this is a living document that can be updated regularly and not wait 20 years like the last version. So that that's one of my other questions to get to later is the process for making sure this can be revised.
Any comments, Mr. Ron?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Option two, approved consistent. I move to recommend approval of process assessment document, the local historic overlay LHO district design standards with the following changes to be incorporated. SR1 A4 is general maintenance. SR2 A26 is minor COA. SR3 A34 is minor COA. SR4 A39 is minor COA. S star five, B1 is general maintenance, no COA in lieu of HPC B1. SR6 B2 as general maintenance, no COA in lieu of HPC B2. SR7, removal of the word major in B3. SR8, removal of B4. SR9, B6 as a minor COA. SR10 C14 as a general maintenance, no COA. Caption on D12 should be clarified to indicate that the design of the brick infilling is inappropriate. Page D71, the last sentence of the paragraph under the heading of fences and walls states, fences are prohibited in Glencoe Village. It should be revised to add front yard to the beginning of this sentence. Page D66, add after the first sentence of the item number nine, the following new sentence, any portion of an outbuilding that is visible from a street must be compatible with the district's character and consistent with these standards. The motion is based upon the consistency with the comprehensive plan in that the land use plan calls for the celebration, encouragement, support, and rehabilitation of historic buildings. Section two, character and identity goal one calls to celebrate Burlington's unique history and local character. Section two, character and identity goal one, recommendation one, calls to encourage the preservation and continued use of historic buildings, districts, landmarks, and landscapes. Section two, character and identity goal one, recommendation two, calls to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for the historic preservation of the city's historic resources. The local historic overlay LHO district design standards and process assessment document complement the historic preservation of the city's historic resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion before we vote?
That's the longest. That is the longest thing.
Yeah.
I have never seen.
I didn't practice it either.
You did very well, Lee.
Lee, thanks. I couldn't have done it.
I'd like to make two comments for the vote. First, I still believe it's open ended on what's going to happen with the design review committee. So I just like to advocate that that is stays on the front burner. I must strongly in favor of the design review committee. Second point is just to repeat a point I've made several times, especially this first year, be have a mechanism for quicker review of changes. The last I saw was an annual review, but at least for the beginning, be prepared to do that quickly. But I'm willing to vote either way. Just wanted to make those two points.
Right, thank you, Ryan.
Chairman Parker, is there one, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this? Or is there anyone else on the call besides the one gentleman that we heard from?
Conrad, is there any anybody from the public who's raised their hands?
Chair Parker, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hands. If anyone would like to speak on this item, can you please indicate so by in the chat or using the raise hand feature? Give it a couple of seconds here and to see if anyone pops up a raised hand.
Yeah, they're supposed to raise their hand if they want to.
Yeah.
Say something.
I've not seen anyone raise their hand, sir.
Let's take the vote.
All right. All in favor of the motion, would you like for me to repeat it? All in favor of the roll call motion. Please raise your hand and Conrad is gonna take.
Take a voice vote. Right, thank you. Go ahead and call it as we normally do. Start with Chair Parker.
Approve.
Member Kirk.
Approve.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Commissioner Ron.
Approve.
Commissioner Gamble.
Approved.
Commissioner Zach Nelson.
Approved.
Commissioner Raynor.
Prove.
Motion carries, sir.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Is there any other business to come before this special meeting? Mr. Walker, do you have anything else to say?
It looks like he is on mute, but I would say he's.
Yeah.
Oh, here he is.
I was saying, I briefly lost the connections right when you. I was saying, I briefly lost the connections right when you all voted at the critical hour and I just reconnected. I'm assuming it looked like it was headed to approval, though.
Yes. Unanimous.
Well, I look forward to being there in about.
You're still breaking up, Philip. I'm sorry.
It sounds like his connection is bad, but I'll let you know that. We are, we're very pleased and thank you very much for your recommendation. And we'll be moving this item to city council on on July nineteenth. For the, for a discussion only. And then subsequent to that, there'll be a public hearing on the item that's anticipated in August.
Great, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you very much.
Anything else to come before this this board tonight?
Do you need?
Are you motion to adjourn?
You got it, yes.
Second.
All in favor, say a.
I.
I.
I'll have a nice week.
Great job, David. Great job, Conrad.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I'm going to end the recording and.